But more, oh yeah. For pass starting here. Um, it is six forty and we are going to call the um.
Sure.
Final budget work gearing agenda to order on September twenty six. Um, we will. Uh, do we want to do the pledge and um. Pledge and invocation now or later?
Let's give it another one.
We can. Okay. All, please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Due to republic, we stand as one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite.
That.
Father God, once again, thank you for entrustedness with your town, for giving us another uh evening tonight together to uh make the best decisions for our town citizens. Give us your wisdom and discernment. And may we honor you in all we say this evening in your glorious name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thanks. Thank you.
All right, um. So if these are the budget, milage and budget resolutions, resolution, I'm gonna have to answer this. I'm sorry, Mikey. Go, sorry.
Um, yeah, go ahead.
Commissioner Paul.
President.
Commissioner Paul. Commissioner Raines.
President.
Vice Mayor Satterfield.
President.
And your service also truth.
Here. All right, so uh the milage and budget regulations, I think that the mayor was going to ask if uh we do them, pull them together, or if we do them one.
Um, yes, I would ask that we do take a vote separately on each one.
Okay, so uh at least if you read the resolution twenty twenty three oh six. All right, just a second.
It's a resolution twenty twenty three oh six, a resolution of the town of Oakland, Florida, adopting a military rate for the levy of ad valorem taxes for the town of Oakland for the fiscal year beginning on October one, pay three and ending on September thirtieth, twenty twenty four, providing for legislative findings and providing conflict severability and effective date.
Okay. Andy, you wanna uh talk about this at all? I know this is the second time we've been through this.
Um, yeah, I'll just uh, you want, I'll go over some of the items in the budget for the upcoming fiscal year that includes a four percent cost of living for town staff. And uh also funds a four percent increase to the employee's health insurance premium. Um, the budget includes two temporary succession planning positions in finance and public works. Reallocation the administrative assistant position in the town manager's office to the vacant facility rentals coordinator position at the arts inherited center. And the reallocation will allow the town to extend operating hours during the week and enhance activities and programs for town residents. The transfer saves the town uh about sixty thousand dollars of payroll expenses. Um, and our enterprise funds uh a new utility service worker position in the water department. And also funds the design of the town uh Towns Lake Apopka Alternative Water Source Project. Uh, the impact fee budget continues uh funding projects in accordance with state statute. Um. That is uh kind of the overview of the budget, and of course, all the budget is funded with uh the resolution you just read of a six point three zero in the rate.
Do you guys have any questions at all? I know except second time. All right, and we need to uh. Close it out and go to the town, correct? Is there any questions? I'll close out the meeting and open the audience. Here and then I will uh open back up the meeting and call for a vote on resolution two thousand twenty three oh six, if I have.
Motion first? All right, so make a motion to uh approve resolution twenty three dash oh six.
Got a motion and a second, uh any other discussion, we'll call for the vote all. All right, and with that, I will turn the meeting back over to the mayor.
I'm still at your half.
Okay, either way, all right.
Okay, this one.
Uh, the second one, resolution twenty twenty three oh seven, which Andy has gone through the detail with it, but at least he would please read that one.
Resolution. Florida in the year twenty twenty three, twenty four, ready for legislative finding by conflict severability and effective date.
Okay, um, and again, Andy has kind of gone through the the details of it. Do we have any questions from the table? All right, I'll close the meeting and open a public hearing. Any questions from the audience? This is just terribly hard. I will close the public hearing. The meeting back up. Uh, what's your pleasure?
Make a motion, approve resolution two thousand twenty three dash zero seven.
Second it. Motion in the second, any other discussion? I'll call for the vote, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, ayes have it, and clear now.
Okay, so we'll be back in business at seven o'clock.
So.
The reg.
Um, did you want to talk?
Never. See.
Okay, um, I would like to call the town commission meeting to order for September twenty sixth. We already had the pledge and the invocation, so we will dispense that, call the order we already have, nothing's changed. So um. Presentations, that's what's next. Blind Americans Equality Day. So. Town of Oakland Blind Americans Equality Day, whereas by joint resolution approved on October sixth nineteen sixty four, Congress designated October fifteenth of each year as White Kane Safety Day to recognize the contributions of Americans who are blind or have impaired vision. Whereas it is important that all residents in the town of Oakland that are blind or visually impaired have an opportunity to live active and independent lives. Whereas approximately six percent of adults in Florida are blind or have serious difficulty seeing even when wearing glasses. Whereas for Floridians who are blind or visually impaired, the white cane is an important tool self-reliance and self-participative full participation and inclusion in our society. Whereas the use of white canes, dog guides, public and private transportation programs have ensured that Floridians who are blind or visually impaired can travel efficiently and safely, breaking down barriers to success and independence. Whereas in two thousand and eleven, the White Kane Safety Day was named Blind Americans Equality Day by President Barack Obama. Whereas this proclamation called upon public officials, business and community leaders, education librarians, and Americans across the country to observe this day with appropriate ceremonies, activities, and programs to celebrate and recognize the accomplishments and contributions of blind and virtually or and visually impaired Americans. Whereas we can recommit to forging ahead with the work of perfecting our union and ensuring we remain a nation where all people, including those living with disabilities, have every opportunity to achieve their dream. Thanks. So we have one more. Um, this is National uh National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas October two thousand and twenty three marks thirty eight years that the breast cancer, National Breast Cancer Awareness Month has educated women and men about early breast cancer to uh detection, diagnosis, and treatment. And whereas one in eight women will be diagnosed with breast cancer in their lifetime. And whereas through early detection and improved treatments, the five-year relative survival rate is ninety nine percent. Whereas this month, as we honor those lost breast cancer, let us join with the loved ones who celebrate their memory and the patients who battle this disease every day. As well as our nation's advocates, medical researchers, and healthcare providers to renew our commitment to better prevent, detect, and treat breast cancer. And whereas the Breast Cancer Society has has searched endlessly for cure through vital research and has the mammoth task of educating our community and all Americans through risks of, through the risks of breast cancer.
Thanks.
All right, so we're now to public forum. If there is anybody here who wishes to speak, I see your hand, Carlos, wishes to speak on something that's not already on the agenda. Donna, you too? Okay, um, have you both signed the?
The notice.
Okay, I'll let Carlos go first then. So Carlos, you have three minutes.
First, apologies for the county aware, I was not speaking amazing Oakland businesses, so. Anyways, uh, Carlos, I'm sitting on the fourth tier of the street. Um, just wanted to say that I experienced, um, um.
Farmer's market?
I'm forgetting the words right now.
Farmer's market?
The farmers' market danger, um, a couple weeks ago.
It's like over here, right?
Yeah. Um, I just wanted to say, um, I was a little concerned that, you know, Thursday, like, obviously, we're gonna show up, so probably kind of came over and it was so much fun, like, there were so many people. Um, and those tamales, if you haven't tried them, but I'm, is it like the tamales place?
I'm on it this time.
I will be too.
Seriously, the best, so good. But anyways, just wanted to uh say that I'm looking forward to it, um, the day after tomorrow and uh super cool, like, I ended up with some cookies, with some tamales. Yeah, like a bunch of stuff, so yay, Thursday seemed to be working out and it was young.
Yeah, and the reason that we did Thursdays was not to um winter garden, collide with winter garden, flare my.
It was fun, it was good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, Donna.
Of course, with your last time talking about the post office.
Yep.
And. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands that I understand that the zip code is a huge issue. Um, we should all in Oakland have three, four, seven, six, oh, but my issue was not, it is with the zip code, but my big issue is with the cost of the post office boxes.
Yep.
Um, so, and I'm sure you're aware, because I'm sure you've probably talked to Nancy, but this, this is a letter, I've got one for each of you all, if you'd like it. Um, I contacted John McGee, who works in consumer affairs for the state of Portland District Two from the post office. And so he asked me to send him an email about what my concerns were. So I sent him an email.
You have one more.
Um, I, well, this.
Take it.
That's it.
Please do.
Um, so, um, he asked me to send him an email, what my concerns, sent him an email, what my concerns were. Uh, the the purple thing that came out from the post office.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That kind of really, it was just in very poor taste for them to send it out the way that they did, but in any case, once I did that, honestly, I did not expect to hear back from anybody. I just thought it would.
Yeah, that's pretty much the expectation all the way around.
It would go by the wayside, but within a few hours of me contacting him, he had forwarded my email to Dwayne Donaldson, who is um an investig-, for lack of a better term, he's an investigator for consumer affairs for the post office. And so after a while of him looking at it and it took me kind of explaining, because he's like, it looks like there's a town within a town, and blah, blah, blah. And so I'm telling him, no, there's no town within a town, it's just that the county has given zip codes to areas of Oakland that are in the far west side, which really shouldn't be that way, and just a lot of explanation.
Yeah.
So with that, um, I got this letter, obviously, I mean, you can read it, it talks about how to address things and um, so. I don't know how it's gonna happen, and I still have some follow-up emails and things to try to figure this out, because they're going to refund all six hundred people that it affects. They're gonna refund twenty-four months of their post office box fee. And then from now on, the post office boxes for those six hundred people that are in the historic area of town will be for free. So it doesn't really address, like, it's still, and he acknowledges that it's still going to be somewhat difficult on how to um address packages and mail. Um, he does kind of say it is still an issue. But at the current time, they say it's a cost issue, why they're not going to do home delivery, but it is not out of the question. So anyway, I just wanted to come back, because, you know, I pretty much said I'd go to Washington if I needed to, but I mean, it didn't really happen. I just got ahold of, I think, maybe the right person at the right time.
My person in the little office in the corner somewhere.
And I just looked up a whole bunch of phone numbers and Terry and I started calling all of them and just sending out stuff until I got the right one. But this is the official response from the email. So if I can't, my next thing is to figure out, well, how are we gonna get the refunds?
Right.
And if I've already paid for my box up here and you haven't, and you get twenty-four months, should I get thirty-six months? And so there's still some logistical things. I mean, honestly, I wouldn't care. I mean, it's not really for me about the money, it's about the issue that, I mean, I have been for the twenty whatever years I've lived here, almost thirty, I've asked the question, how is this so? And I've gotten so many answers from so many townspeople and the post office people. And their cat response over here is, well, if you don't, if you, if we do anything different, um, we don't charge you, then you're not gonna have a post office here. And I'm like, well, that's a bunch of crap, because we don't just have the hundred people that used to live here in the eighties, we have, there's six hundred that this affects. So why can six hundred people, and there's more, because most people have post offices, I mean, have, a lot of people have mailboxes, they're using this as well, along with winter garden people. So why are you gonna tell people? So I don't know, but I wanted to, um.
I'll be waiting, I'll be waiting on baited for that, actually get figure this out.
Well, it it'll be, it, well, because then my next step is, as soon as I can figure it out, I will share it with everybody. I just wanted to make sure that it was kind of known that I know there are still issues, and I know there's things that can come about, and I know all of that. And I know the zip code is a big issue, but it's just a bigger issue that we shouldn't be penalized for some unknown unforeseen reason that nobody can.
So remember.
Explain or remember or find. And he said he went back through statutes. Um, back to the eighties, he went, or I mean, not statutes, but ordinances. He said, I've looked through your town ordinances, I've looked through all of the stuff we have, and they actually do, I think, keep pretty good records. I mean, if you go to the right person. Um.
Sharing them, that's.
Yeah, I mean, well, that's.
And for me, the the biggest thing is what's being addressed here is people who can't afford to pay for post office boxes and are being forced to. That was the first thing in my mind I wanted solved. The rest of it um is, is gr-, will be great if we could get one zip code and, you know, but this is what I was, I was looking for relief for the residents.
And and hopefully, this will bring that, it may not be like, um.
Tomorrow.
This actually happened pretty quick, by the way, this.
How you said that?
This happened in, I want to say, five days.
That's amazing.
From the time I made the first email till the time I got their response. So it was very, very um quick, it might have been less than that. So I just wanted to get something official back from somebody in the post office. So when nobody can figure this out, then I can just go to Channel Six or.
Yeah, and did you like, did you talk to Nancy at all?
I, yeah, we've had some text conversations back and forth, and so that's, it's been interesting.
Okay.
It's just, it's just been interesting. I don't want, that's why I said, I don't want to step on anybody's toes, because I know y'all have been working on it.
Um, hey, all I wanted to find was the guy in the corner in the back of the.
And it just made me, after all these years, mad enough when I had to write them a check for a hundred and seventy-six dollars. And I'm not saying I can't afford it, but I shouldn't have to afford it.
Right.
I shouldn't have to, you know, and there are a lot of people, and I told him, I said, I don't even, because he said, well, his first thing was, well, do you have a premium box? And I'm like, a premium box? I have the second box from the smallest one. And he goes, why? Oh, what do you mean? He goes, you have to pay for that. I'm like, yes, sir. He goes, well, okay, why? And I'm like, I don't know why, that's why. Tell me, why?
Well, you have.
Because it's something wasn't, there's premium boxes and not premium boxes.
Mine is a not premium.
Premium box as well.
Yeah.
Anyway, I'll keep you guys posted on it and let you know.
First and foremost, if we can get relief for people who can't afford this, well, you know, we can be mad, but we can't afford it. But they, they can be mad and they can't.
Well, I mean, I look at it this way, if I get my hundred and seventy-six dollars and my hundred and sixty-six from last year, because it went up ten dollars this year, back, and then I don't have to pay again in the future, there's so, I mean, that saves a ton of money for the people of Oakland. Yes, not just me.
You know, the the small ones that we have are a hundred, they were a hundred and thirty-four, like.
I know, it's ridiculous.
Yeah.
I have the eight, the littlest ones that they squish all your mail in and tear it down.
Tell you, Elaine made an art out of putting stuff in those.
Yeah.
Destroying it.
Doing this, I got, I was talking to, I spoke to Ronald Cooper.
Ronnie. That's Ronnie, you're there.
And he sent me the deeds of the property, and I found out like how it got transferred and who owns it and all that stuff. So it was kind of a learning experience, but I don't want to take up any more time, but I wanted to let you know, I'll keep you posted on it.
Okay, that's right.
Anything else I did, I'll pass it along, and maybe we really will get some money back.
Thank you, Donna. And you know, the thing is, for folks, you know, look forward. You know, and then Mike works out the simple, someone with something like a letter like this, when they go into pay, say, here's my payment.
And but just so you know, I do care about that too, but I'm, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna get some money back.
Oh, I believe me, no one's gonna say, no, don't worry about.
Getting us all some money back, there you go.
Donna, I got a good question. This is directed just to you for the refund?
It, no, it's, we talked about that, it's, the letter is to me, but if you look in here, it says to.
Just want to clarify, it's the record, I don't want, out of the meeting.
It said this.
Citizens think.
The six hundred people.
Yeah.
One of the things I got, it addressed the six hundred people, so it may not be in this one, but it's, it's.
It's in here.
I thought.
Clarify it so we don't think.
I thought it was in here.
That the rest of the citizens may come and say, where's my three hundred dollars? She promised, I saw it, I saw the meeting minutes.
It's, I think it's the one, there is a kind of a response kind of thing here. And it talks about being in effect for the six hundred people that are affected.
I mean, if you have that copy, that might be.
Yeah, I thought, I thought that I printed it, I thought that's one of the ones I printed, but I have that as well, and I have a whole email chain, so.
Good job, Donna.
I'll have to have that when I go to Channel Six, so I'm glad. We're glad to have.
You know, so.
Donna, we're glad to have help.
Which they got in there.
People want to sit on Facebook and all they want to do is shit or pout or complain about everything, but then nobody will show up. Exactly.
Well, see, now you have proven that you are Oakland.
Definitely, but I would so love to.
Thank you, thank you. Wait a minute, let me think. Oh, yeah, we have.
Oh, it's, yeah, it's far better use of your time than we are.
Eric, I might have another resource for you with this issue, if you'd like, maybe help me with the bear issue also. Just, you know, so when we do address changes in Bradquist, which I'm serving as the town planner, um, when we process address changes for the town, like recently when we did the addressing for um in the state of Oakland Park, who we coordinate with is a gentleman out of the post office in Tampa. And that's where the gentleman, that gentleman there is the one that deals with the addressing here in this part of Florida.
Okay.
Um, I can share, hi- his name is Will Song, he is an address technician with the US Post Office. He reaches, like, we had an issue where we found out one of the carriers here in Oakland was falsifying deliveries to people. And um, so he's a very good resource. If we have questions about how addresses and your signers zip codes, I think Will could be very helpful. So I can share that with y'all.
Yes, please.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right.
All right.
Consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions or comments about this consent agenda at the table?
I'll make the motion to accept consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, so moved and seconded, all in favor?
All.
Wait a minute, aye. Did anybody have anything to say? From the audience. Okay, sorry. Um. Policy Matters, one, five, six, nine, oh, East Oakland Avenue, town design standards variance.
Okay, good evening, Mayor. Um, my name is Bradquist, I'm serving as your contract town plan. Um, what we have before you is a variance, one, five, six, zero, East Avenue. Um, it's the owner, the being CEO. Um, I will let you all know that the applicant is not here this evening, they are aware of the meeting and so. Um, so, but they are not here. Okay, so, uh, this is already, uh, this property is located in the south side of East Oakland Avenue, the very last property in the town of Oakland, on the south side of the road. Um, the property is acre and sauce, it's Arlen A Zone property, the traditional neighborhood district. What we're looking to, what Mr. Seado is looking to do is to build a new single-family home on the property. Um, however, the home that he wants to build is much larger than what you allow within your code and with the time standards here at the town. So the variances that he needs, what he wants to use is, needs to, um, there are people who have a wider house, things house than is allowed, um, allowing for a wide, a a larger depth of the house and also the lot frontage. I'll give you a little bit more detail as we move on here. That's, so we need variance related to the building size. The other variance he needs is the building setback, he want, he's requesting a further setback than what your code allows. And again, I have more to say about that. And then the last variance then relates to the type of structures, he's looking to do three, or you count what only allows one. So those are the variances that he. Through the process, just, uh, we did notices, it was noticed in the newspaper, um, we did post a sign, and we did, uh, contact, we sent out notices to adjacent property owner. We've received one response, um, from the adjacent property owner, uh, Mr. Frank Scallion, who owns the property adjacent and the fellows going, and Mr. Scallion hit submit his opposition to the request for the variance. So he did not, he isn't, he did oppose any variance.
Okay, can, before we go any further, can you orient me and anybody else who might not understand exactly where this is?
Yeah, so there, uh, the map on the property, it's so that that's, oops, I mean, there you go, there you go. So that's East Oakland Avenue, and that's the very eastern boundary of your town limits before you go into Winter Garden.
Hey, so what little houses here?
Those are, uh, I can't remember the name of that little subdivision. Yes, sir.
South?
You got it.
Yes. Right where the.
Is that where the K square is?
Yes.
Yes.
That's, that's where the word subject is, I believe, is where that light is.
Yeah.
Okay.
The whole subdivision is to the south, and that little arm that goes up is that access road to.
Yeah, I understand. But does everybody else understand? Okay.
That's probably, thank you. Thanks, please. Um, my. So in terms of the variance, a little bit more specific to what they are, so the first variance related to the max house width. What your code limits is for the, the main body of the house, it's limited to a maximum width of thirty-two feet. Um, their proposed house is at seventy-one feet, four inches. Um, in terms of your maximum depth, your code, and this is under your traditional neighborhood in Oakland and state home, the largest of your home types. Um, the depth is forty-six feet, that's allowed in your code, they're proposing fifty-nine feet. In terms of the building frontage, so the the front of the building that would run parallel to the street, your code limits at sixty percent, they're at six, almost seventy percent, six, sixty-nine point seven seven percent. On the setbacks, your code has a minimum, which is twenty, and a maximum of twenty-five. Um, their house, as we're proposing, is set back much further, at a hundred and thirteen on one side and about a hundred and fifteen on the other. You will note in the analysis that we have, we do support that variance, and so that you're paying the zoning war, because what part of why they're doing that, or wanting that, is to pull it far enough back on the property so they don't impact all those trees that are along East Oakland Avenue. So that's why they have that variant. So we did support that one. And lastly, the accessory structures, the number, and as I said, you only allow one, they have three, they have two accessory. And lastly, the accessory structures, the number, and as I said, you only allow one. They have three, they have two accessory garages and then next proposed accessory, um, gym and spa. And lastly, you require any accessory structure to be set back at least twenty feet from the front of the house, and they are asking to have one of their accessory garages right in line with the front of the house. So those are all the variants we think we need for it. This is the site plan and the renderings of the home. Um, I, it, it's in your agenda item, but as you can see with the house, it's quite large. Um, that, that property, it's a hundred and fifty feet in width. So it's a hundred, yeah, it's a hundred, yeah, it's a hundred and fifty feet in width. Um, I don't call the depth, but total, it's an acre in size. So it's very deep. But it's only, it's a hundred and fifty feet in deep. And that, so, um, as you see that they're at seventy percent of that lot width, with their building, and that includes that accessory garage in line with the front. So they're, 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 they're much larger than what you would allow within your code. Now, I will say they do need the side setback, but your side setback here is only seven and a half feet, so that really doesn't come into play given the, its property. Um, so that is a site plan. You can see the three accessory structures. Yes, sir.
You're saying that that seventy percent does include that one structure, that one hallway of the garage?
Yes, sir. Because they brought it in line, we have to include that within that, that calculation. Yes, sir.
How do you get three?
Yeah, so we have, yes, sir. So we have the two in the back, which are not attached in any way to the building. Um, the one at the bottom, that one there is a detached garage, and then the one there that you're pointing to is the detached.
This one right here is one.
That's one.
That one's a garage.
And then the one in front, we're counting that as a third. It is attached.
Why is that third if it's attached right here with that room?
Yeah, it has that hallway attached at the front. That was something that we made that determination. We, we saw it wasn't fully part of the building. Because that didn't meet your requirement for a connector. And that's why we concluded that as an accessory, but that is, I will say, it is questionable, but it, so if we did include that not as an accessory, they still are, would have two or you only allow, so it still exceeds that. Um, but that's why we had that in there. That's why we had that as part of that. So there's the floor plan, again, nothing else. Um, it's, it's nothing unusual about it. Um, it's two stories. Uh, they do meet your height requirements for five feet. That required, I will tell you, one of their first renditions that they submitted, they were at over fifty feet, and they did revise that, and they brought the height down, so they do meet your height requirement. Um, but you, that's the floor plan, um, again, and then with their accessory garages, they're closed. Spa and doing the bounce. One of the pieces of the analysis that we did is, and one of the parts, your code, when we look at the variances, you know, how does this fit with the purpose and intent and the development that's already here in the town of Oakland? And so what we looked at, well, what's around it? Well, as you all know, just to the west of this property, there is already four one acre properties that are similar in size to, to what this one is. So we looked at those and we looked at what's built on those properties. And I will say, these were built, with the exception of the one in twenty eighteen, prior to what your codes are today. And even that one in twenty eighteen was probably before you adopted your codes in twenty eighteen. Um, but we did, but we did look at that because we want to look at compatibility. And when we look at those, you can see that those houses range from four thousand square feet to eight thousand square feet in terms of their sizes. Um, so smaller than what we have being proposed here, and they are on roughly the same sized property.
Okay, I got a question. I'm.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, are these in Oakland?
Yes, they are.
So they're on the south side of the road?
On the south side of the road.
West.
So I'm trying to figure out exactly where they are.
Back this way, the house is coming back this way. This house, on here, it's the only side of the house, place that we have house.
That house right here, this is where the, where the, uh, ditched, uh.
Right.
Now, now. This is all papers and it's a gray house.
Yep.
This is the white house that's been there for a while.
Is that Oakland Arms?
Other side.
Other side.
Side of the street.
I thought.
South side, right.
Right, it's by the lake?
No, no.
South side, lake is up here, north.
Yeah.
And right here's the school and the police station over here.
Okay. So that's, um, like, the nineteen fifties ranch. And then.
Yes, that's that.
Past that. So on the other side of the canal, that's the Rossers.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, now I know where I am.
So.
Okay, thank you.
So, and what we also did, you see in the PowerPoint, we, we did kind of an average. Um, so we looked at this, the proposed house that's asking for the variance, they're at ten thousand eight hundred ninety one square feet. They're at about twenty five percent of the lot area. We look at the lots, there are the houses that are on those lots, they're, on average, they're about just under six thousand square feet, and they're only about thirteen percent of the lot area. So.
Not little.
They're, they're not little. Correct, correct. So we wanted to look at that. Please. So in terms of what we had to do, uh, working as your staff is, you know, when we review, we gotta look at your code and what is the purpose and intent and what is the, with the town, what is you want to see for your title? And why are your codes the way they are? And your codes are very clear what the town of Oakland wants to be. And it's within your town design manual, it's not a part of your code. It's very clear in there that says that intent of the town is not to have these large houses. Houses that are at a human scale, that promote the cultural character of the town of Oakland. And it's very, to me, it's very clear that that's what your code intends to.
Well, I think, we, the intent also, just to elaborate, is, um, that we want them to fit into the fabric of their surroundings.
Exactly. Yes, we'll think. To fit in with, with what's around them, absolutely. So with that background, we, we now look at the six criteria that we need to look at, whether or not, or the variance, I won't go through all six of them, but I can summarize them. Um, for all the variances, with the exception of the front setback. We, we found that, as your staff, they don't meet any of the criteria. There's not a hardship. They can build a house to meet the code. They just want to build a bigger house than what they can build. And that's really not a hardship that, because they can build a house and meet the code and be fully compliant. Um, and that's really number one big part of why we don't find this compliant with any of the standards. The other part of it is, it's just as the mayor said, it's not compliant and consistent with the character of the town and what you are, and there's really not another house in this town that's this size of a, of a, of a house. So it's completely, in our opinion, completely inconsistent with the character of the town. So we do find for the size of the house, variances and the variances related to the accessory structure, that they don't meet those and we do recommend denial. For the front setback, we do recommend approval of that because we think the preserving the trees and front is important enough to support those six criteria. So to push it as far back as we can, so we are recommending approval that even if the other variances would be denied, and if you approve the variance for the front setback, any other development that would come in would then meet that front setback. Would still be, still be in effect, to be pushed back, wouldn't have to come back. If, if you just. So that's generally, so as I said, as staff, we recommend denial of all the building variances, um, for sides and structures, but we recommend approval of the setback. This was reviewed by your planning and zoning board last week. Um, they took, they reviewed our presentation. The applicant was here at the meeting last week. They presented their side. Uh, the planning and zoning board did agree with the staff recommendation. They unanimously recommend denial of the variances related to the building size and the accessory structures. But they did also recommend approval of the setback to allow the greater setback. So they did make that recommendation to use the town commission, deny, and approve that last one. And with that, that's summary of the presentation.
So my, my first, I mentioned Frank.
That's Franco Franco. Yes, sir.
Um, he is, um, opposing?
He is opposing.
Well, he has house going right behind.
He has the grove that's right behind and, yes, yes, ma'am.
And there, I don't remember what the average.
He, the laws will probably be. Forget what he told me yesterday. To meet the code, he'd be somewhere in the neighborhood of three to four thousand square foot.
Okay, so. Well, no, the only question that I have, because I see exactly where you're going and I understand why we have these, um, in, these, uh, restrictions in place, is but when you look at those houses on Oakland Avenue, and when you take into consideration, standing on the Winter Garden line, when Oakland Park and, um, you've got the cucumber house and, you know, all those houses. So, and then, um, Dwight's, you know, modern farmhouse thing, those, those look pretty big. And they're on various. But, uh, so do you take that into consideration too?
I mean, we looked at it as holistically. Now, we focused on that area right adjacent to them because they were very similar to what this property is in size. That's why we focused on that. But we didn't look at those other areas, Mayor. We looked.
Okay.
But we looked holistically.
Okay, Madam Mayor, if I may as well, um, a variance typically asks the question, can the property owner make a reasonable use of this property? And so as Brad said, they, the property owner can build a house on the property.
It's just not this big or with that, not that many out.
Yes, but typically we wouldn't look at, you know, what are people, other decisions able to do, or what were people able to do in the past?
That's fair.
You know, I got a question. You said on maximum width, thirty two feet, maximum depth, it's forty six feet, which is only a fourteen hundred and seventy two square foot home. But I'm, I'm looking at this and I'm like, you must be, this must have been designed for when we had our fifty foot wide lots, that's our standard lot. What was the depth of it?
Um, that, and actually, I think at least.
That's a separate piece of.
Small. I mean, that's.
Yeah, so what, what happens, Commissioner, is your code that has the ability, and that's what this shows, and I did my best, um, is that, that limitation, that thirty two by forty six inches for the, the base of the house, or the main body of the house. And what I, how I can say, it's that main rectangular square. Then what your code says to go wider and deeper, you do the wings on either side, which allows you to go out further than that thirty two, and then you can do a linear extension of those deeper to the back. So that's what I did with that little drawing that, that Elise handed out to me today. Is that's adding the maximum they could with the wings on the side and the extension to the back, which would be compliant with your code. I do want to make it, by the way, here, I did my best, so it might be a hundred percent accurate, but it's within the realm here. Where you, what you end up with is a, of, at the base, a, a footprint of about thirty to five hundred square feet. And if you go double to stories, you're going to be at about seven thousand square feet. So even under your code with that initial small box that you start with, you can end up at about seven thousand square feet of a house.
You can.
You can, absolutely. You can.
Double about it.
You just have to, you have to design it consistent with your code by not having it like they have, like one massive building, basically, for the bulk of their building. You, it gets broken up with the middle and then, because these wings are supposed to be separated from the front of the house. You can allow a certain, I think it's two thirds that go out. So it gives you, it breaks up that massing of it, so you can still get a decent sized house. And that's why, when we looked at that and we said, what I looked at this morning or this afternoon is, you can do about seven thousand square feet, which is in the realm of those other houses that are adjacent to them. They're on another eight, eight lots. So it kind of meets that intent.
So he can still use this square feet somewhat and repurpose the areas?
Yeah, he could shrink it down a little bit, kind of break up that mass that he shows the house now, to have it more aligned with these wings to the side. Um, that, that plan could be revised to make it smaller. I can tell you, because the architect, we had a lot of conversations with the architect before this came forward in hearings. And I can tell you, the architect said is, this is what the owner wants. That's why they didn't change it.
Gotcha. All right, do we have any other questions at the table before we um, make a motion? We can have discussion after the motion also.
Did, uh, it got denied by P and Z? Were there, what were their comments that, are they?
It was, uh, very similar that they felt it just wasn't in character with the town of Oakland and what the town of Oakland is, and they can build a house, a decent sized house, and still be within the character of Oakland.
Right.
So, you know, you're off, are approve it? Um, not, or, or to, uh, make a motion to, uh, deny, similar to the P and Z.
Madam Mayor, I would suggest that we take a, if everyone can turn to the last page and.
And, and.
If we take this on each of the, each of this. So you would have one vote on the building size, another vote on the number, and then have the street structure.
Okay, so two denials and one approval.
It's, what's?
Yeah.
Yes.
So I need a motion on the table, um, for the first, if you want to go with what P and Z said, first denial.
I, I got a question. Before we do that, the, the number and setback and the accessory structure, does that have one motion there? Or are you, we're gonna deny the setback? And also the number of accessories?
Uh, yes, the recommendation. We could break those into two votes if the mission would rather do that. Um, but it's, it's also okay to vote on those as one item.
Yeah, those were in the part of the denial or the accessory structure.
Yes.
The size and the number of accessories.
Yeah, those are two different, either the setback one and the number of structures, other one, right?
Those are two standards. Um, we did present them together and the team looked at them together because they are very much related. As, as said, you could do them separately if you wanted to, for sure. Because they are two separate things.
Does that make sense, Al?
It makes sense to separate them, because I'm looking at the setback is, we don't have a problem with the setback.
Well, the, the, the issue for the, just to clarify, the setback could accessory structure, that's not related to the issue about the setback with the trees.
Okay.
The accessory structure setback is related to where the front of the house is. So wherever that house sits, your code requires that accessory structure to be at least twenty feet behind the front of the house.
What you're calling that first garage has that little bridge to it, that's one of the accessory structure.
And it's in line, that would be that style of that.
That is, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Hmm, okay.
So we get the tree saving with the twenty five foot setback.
With the house.
And that.
With the house.
Yes, sir.
That makes.
Yeah. All right.
You want to word it the way you.
No, I, I got it now. Good.
Hey, who wants to go?
I'll make a motion that for, um, one, five, six, nine, O, East Oakland Avenue, that even the recommendations deny variances of the building size, to deny the, the number and the setback of accessory structures.
Okay. All right, I need a second.
I'll second.
Hey, seconded. Um, I'm gonna open this up to, uh, the public. Does anyone have any comments or questions? Close it. Any further, just. All in favor?
All right.
Nice.
Nate? Tell me why you haven't talked about this.
The fact they're so far back. I think he should be allowed to be able to build that, his setback, so far. I don't know why he did. But I don't know. You know, so you go on a hundred and thirteen feet back, you know, that's huge. You got plenty, you know, plenty of the side setback.
I think this is what we should have discussed before we made a motion. Um, I didn't know you had any concerns. We didn't know. So.
Brad, can you address why? What we're just asking, why we're denying?
Right, well, one of them, kind of getting to your point, Commissioner, is that the way your design districts are set up, and every property in the town of Oakland is in a design it doesn't account for large properties. One of your comments is correct. You know, the way those standards are set up, it does assume the lot sizes within the design district, which is a seventy foot wide lot and a hundred and twenty five foot deep. So that's, but the, the way that they're set up within your town, it applies to any property, no matter what the size. So that's why we, because I, I do share what your thought was, is that it is a big property and, and it's different than what was kind of, I'm sure contemplated when that was done. But that is what was done, and, and your code, and the way your code was written is very clear about protecting the charact- But that is what was done. And, and your code, and the way your code was written is very clear about protecting the character of the town.
So, you know, we've been here before. Um, I mean, the vote's been taken, so it does, to me, it doesn't, you know, there's nothing that's going to change this. But we've been here before and we cannot rewrite code at this table. If that's the code, that's the code. And we can't rewrite it at this kind of, um, juncture. We can rewrite it as something that is, we're addressing the code, but it's not because of a building or a lot size.
But it's.
Or whatever.
But he's asking for a variance, and we give variances like on setbacks and too. So why can't we give them a variance on those sides of the house?
Well, I think it depends on, you know, there's, there's a lot of reasoning going into this. And, you know, that's where we were. We could have had this discussion prior to the vote. But I don't, I don't know that it would have changed anything. Because we can't just, at, you know, at this kind of juncture where we're making a final decision, decide that we're going to rewrite codes.
And I think if for me, records all in this, trying to keep it a little more uniform with the rest of them. And if they have to redesign, you know, the house to fit a little bit more, setting that uh, other garage back to make it uniform with the rest just seemed to be appropriate because of what we have written in our code. So, and if we want to go back and, and look at that, then that's.
Lot sizes. We can't decide that we're going to demand a larger lot if they're meeting the code. It works both ways.
But again.
Yeah. And I would, you know, I would say, let us know before we vote so we can discuss it. And maybe we're wrong. I don't know.
Are this felt, because he's so far, his setback's so big, I don't think it's appropriate to have the house on there.
The whole house with three
Yeah.
Structures. Okay, well, that's how it, that'll be part of the record. But I don't think we're at a juncture where we can go back and redo this.
No, the bullets.
Yeah.
And I think the same too. But I mean, one of the critical parts here is, but is there a hardship applying the code? And he can still build a house, not as big as he wants, but there's, the code doesn't prevent him to build something that's reasonable.
Yeah, pretty large.
Yes. If I may say, kind of your, your standard variance situation that you think about, you think about a triangular lot, that the code's just not set up to deal with that. No matter which way you try to put a house on it, you're going to run afoul of some setback or something. That's, that's really the situation that this variance is, is, um, to address. And so when we have somebody who just, you know, there is no hardship like a triangular lot, they just want to do something different. Um, it, it just doesn't meet the criteria. So, maybe that.
But you're on the record as not agreeing, which is good. Okay?
Thank you.
Uh huh. So.
Well, we got a second.
Oh. Oh, I'm sorry. You're right.
Um, and I'll finish up. I'll make the motion, uh, again, agreeing with staff and P and Z to approve the variance of the setback of the house greater than twenty-five feet from the property line for the purpose of saving the oak trees in them. So.
Okay, it's been moved to seconded. Any questions or comments at the table? Okay. Um, I'm going to open it to the public. Do we have any questions or comments? All right. I'll bring it back to the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Second.
So the next thing on the agenda, is this you, Chief? Okay. Do you know the part about be brief, be sitting, be seated?
I do. I'm going to tell you to go, so go ahead.
What do you do?
All right, this is resolution two thousand twenty-three dash eight.
Mr. Fisher, thank you for giving me a brief moment to make this presentation. Uh, as you know, since, since I came here, it's been, uh, discussed, widely discussed about making uh, a more, a broader golf cart ordinance or restructure or anything. So we have several steps that we need to address this resolution. Uh, this full resolution, the rest is just the first step. So we'll go over this power, a bigger purpose of this. If you're present, it should create a four-way stop intersection at the intersection of Oakland and Power Street, uh, which is going to make that what's called a, uh, it's going to be a safety method for golf carts. Coming, uh, global descent. In exhibit A, we travel up there and you have a top of the PowerPoint. It shows the two stop signs that will be added. There's already existing stop signs, north and southbound on Pollard, approaching, um, from, or approaching Oakland Avenue. So those two signs are already in existence. This proposal is just to add the two on Oakland Avenue. Uh, here's the problem statement with this. We got far as done here, but currently the, uh, residents are not permitted by our ordinance to travel on or cross Oakland Avenue at any intersection due to the language in the ordinance, which says golf carts will not be permitted to use County Road four thirty-eight, Oakland Avenue, South Tub, State Road fifty, or Remington Road. Golf carts may be permitted to cross four thirty-eight at a controlled intersection, and that's what this resolution is perfect to do. A controlled intersection would be controlled by four-way stop or a traffic light. This would qualify this. Uh, and the, uh, golf carts will be able to cross at the controlled intersection while obeying all traffic laws. There's a couple of pictures on the next slide to give you, uh, a view of what we're talking about. It is uh, a beady part of a straightaway. So once we establish a four-way stop here in this straightway, uh, straightaway, it provides the safest area on the west side of Oakland to cross. So everybody who's south of Oakland Avenue would be able to cross and come to us and get down here, go to the post office or enjoy the center or anything like that. Uh, and that's, like I said, step one of this is just connect that, the southwest part of Oakland into the downtown area. Uh, here's the solution. Here. In order to provide this solution, which enables golf cart traffic operating safely within designated golf cart safety zone, a solution to address the current problem is to make this four-way stop intersection at Pollard and Oakland Avenue. The secondary benefit, which doesn't affect golf cart stuff, but it will affect, it will slow down traffic, which we do yield or feel a lot of complaints from residents in that area about cars on that straightaway speeding. So naturally it will slow them down by half the time. Uh, just please keep in mind, this is only step one. Like I mentioned, this is a multi-step process. This four-way stop would be just the first step. Uh, some of the future steps, uh, we'll conduct, we hope to conduct a speed study, which would potentially look at changing the speed limit of Oakland Avenue, which would jump me in at twenty-five miles per hour. Uh, you can identify golf cart access areas. So when you enter and exit those areas, the golf cart is allowed past this point and leaving no cars down this path. Uh, this would allow, we would also, one of the steps is to allow golf cart travel on tub, south of Oakland Avenue to State Road fifty. That's a quick, a quick fix, which would be one of the next steps. It's a straightaway. It's already, it, it is thirty-five miles an hour, but it is a safe avenue of travel as long as you stay north of fifty. Uh, we revise the town ordinance, the current town ordinance, and I will work with Stephanie with that to include all of these changes. But what we're going to do is get all the steps in place before we write the town ordinance. So we only have to make one change. And, um, also what, what we would like to do is designate an appropriate area for golf carts to pick up and drop off students at the charter school. That's something down the road that we're looking at. Uh, and the one thing I didn't include on that one slide also is this, this four-way stop would establish the westernmost controlled intersection. Then allowing travel on tub would allow a central controlled intersection. Then we would identify one to the east. So the entire town would be wrapped up into, or the entire town north of fifty would be wrapped up into this golf cart safety zone. And people could go
Back and forth.
To, with that, with the new access road that's going to allow us into Winter Garden, it would allow full travel between both. Uh, and so this, this last slide, uh, the record, obviously, is to sit on this for a little bit, think about it, enable it, we'll have a discussion. And then when we come back in the next commission meeting, uh, if there's any changes, uh, this resolution. Uh, yes.
Four-way stop in Oakland Avenue are available to cross.
Currently?
No.
If we establish that as one of the controlled intersections.
Section.
Unfortunately, right now, yes, they would be, uh, south, all the way to fifty.
Right, but I'm talking about the people who want to get to Lakeside Church and
Ah.
They can cross over to that.
And yes, and that would be accomplished just by the ordinance, because the ordinance currently says you can't do it. Once we change that language, there's really no reason for it to be in.
But I think, you know, there's a handful of people who want to go to church on Sunday and drive their golf cart over there.
There is. And then, once we hit that step, all that'll be accomplished.
That's great. And you know, the curbing is in, in Oakland Park. So it's not going to be that long, I think.
The connector through Winter's Landing is, is, we're really, really close.
And through Southern Oaks. So I don't think it's too long.
Get it right.
Yeah. I have, it's just waiting with.
Yes, sir.
I got a safety concern. Can you go back to this slide right here? I, it's two questions. One of them is going to be, if that's going to be the stop for the golf carts right here. It's going to invite people to also walk across. So we're going to have, uh, any type of safety like we do over here at the apartments, at the old pedestrian.
You can absolutely look at that.
Because even though the golf carts will go across, but people are going to want to also walk across, and that will be unsafe. So I like to see the same lights and safety that we have going into Longleaf.
Yes, so that's obviously this, this presentation was just to get sure, act that first project. But absolutely, I've been thinking, considering, how are we going to do that? And it's just, at that point, it's just signage. Uh, and the signage can be added with.
Signage, make it stripes on the, on the. Now, on leaf, residents won't be able to use that. But I, I don't know if you insinuated to do something with that arrow. Well, mine has an arrow.
Yeah, I, I put that on there for you guys to see. And what that is.
If you're going to slide right here.
Yes.
To have the arrow.
Yes.
That one.
Yep. So I stuck that arrow up there as a, as kind of an information that when, I met with Mike Parker, he explained this, when they built Longleaf, that road, right where that green arrow is, runs right to a fence with a, a small road's home. It accesses Pollard Street. That's one of the reasons why it shows this intersection. Uh, that would, the change, the access, opening access from Longleaf to this golf cart safety zone would then fall on the HOA for Longleaf. All they have to do is remove one section of fence and open up where the mulch is, and now it's open.
And we recently asphalted that section.
Correct.
Correct.
So it is, it is, there's only about a
Right here.
Three or four foot area of mulch.
Going east to west, we recently asphalted that. There's really safe.
I drove.
Ball all the way to Oakland Avenue.
Correct.
Just, just to add, there is other options to design that in case we had pushback from either, either owner.
Yeah, we got some pushback. That's the day that they called the police on me because they didn't believe I was the police. But they, we did get some pushback from the resident. She said, we don't want golf carts coming out of here and in here. And so I understand you don't, but there are some residents that would like to travel downtown with their golf cart. So we're out here just doing some surveying and looking around. Um, and then she called the cops. But, uh, uh, did you get arrested? But that's sort of.
Down and explain to her that you were really a cop?
The sergeant went down there and said, yes, ma'am, that was the chief, definitely chief.
And the girl flipped him off?
She was, she was missing up about it, but I didn't understand her, that was her opinion.
What was the other options? If you don't want me asking.
The, uh, the, the best option in my partner's opinion is not the crossing between Longleaf and Pollard, but would be to utilize already, we already have the land between San Spurilla and West Sadler. So that just gets improved. That's, that's where you have already approved a linear bar in that area and we just expand.
Talking about over here.
Yes, we expand the size of that, and you have to, our nominated golf carts, and it's done.
And then they would, they could connect the tub, is that correct?
That'd be fine, yeah.
So they could.
It's down by the cemetery.
Yes.
Just south, south of it.
Just north of the cemetery.
And that's, right? Southwest.
South.
South.
Southwest.
South, north is the lake.
If we're bad, I'd do that all the time. I don't even, what's my name?
After members, north is the lake.
Yeah. Uh, any other questions?
I do have a question. Whether we do this or not, if we, um, go down to twenty-five mile an hour on the speed limit, which I personally, I am all in favor of. Um, does that solve the problem in the school? Is it safe for golf carts to go on and just get in the regular car line at that point? Or is that not a safe thing to do rather than make it clear?
It's not an issue of safety, it's an issue of legality. And at that point, it's still not legal.
Okay.
Because of the way the ordinance currently reads. That's why, that'll be our last step is to change all that. But, uh, there is a huge discrepancy uh, and misunderstanding by residents in the town, the difference between a golf cart and a low-speed vehicle. Conversation for another day, but it's, it is, there's a big misunderstanding.
My nephew often has to explain that to police officers who do not, are not employed by Oakland.
He, I spoke with him on the phone at length as well, yes. Uh, but he called to have more at us. In a nutshell, to, before regardless of that, the low-speed vehicle, just remember, our ordinance says that it is against the law to modify a golf cart, try to make it low-speed.
No, I, I wasn't talking about just legally.
But yeah.
Again, because I do see other areas in schools and golf carts do get in line with.
Sure.
Um, so I'm just looking at all the options.
Eventually, uh, even, eventually, if that falls into the ordinance, if we can do it safely, we can do that.
That's my thing. We can probably change what we need, but I want to make sure that I don't want to put people in, in harm's way if that's.
That's the, I, the one thing, I know residents want golf carts. I do not want to sacrifice safety.
Right.
No, we don't want to do, none of us want to do that.
So, uh, that's why this, we're going to do this in bits and pieces. This, this is the smallest and first step that needs to take place after that.
You know, I personally think that once those roads are punched through and done, we really need to be ready to go.
Sure. Well, and as the statute reads right now, is if there is a safer alternative, you're not supposed to drive on county roads, state roads over to Oakland Avenue. And right now, there are safer, safer alternatives. All the roads that parallel Oakland Avenue.
Right. Till you get to Oakland Park.
Right. Which is now within, at that part, we're out of Oakland, we're out of the town of Oakland.
They're still in Oakland.
The, the, the northern part, yeah.
Yeah, the northern part, but they, from Winter's Landing and Southern Oaks to the Oakland, the Winter Garden side of Oakland Park is us.
So that's another challenge, but we're, we're, we, there's no doubt we can get through this and we will work around it, but it's step by step.
I'm just tired of talking about.
You and me both.
Yeah. Let's get it done.
We're acting, we're taking action. This is all.
This is all with every golf cart over here.
I don't drive a golf cart, my golf cart, or do I really care? But, um, you know, it, we just need to keep up with the times and allow people who want to do that to be able to do it.
We'll get there. Any other questions?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We are to, I think, manager report, Andy, on any?
Uh, resolution.
Something else.
Please add it till next time.
Yeah. Excellent. For county, Andy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the, uh, Town Commission. Just a couple, couple of things to report this evening is the town of Oakland is in the process of, uh, becoming a certified dark sky community. Uh, the International Dark Sky Association describes dark sky communities as legally organized cities and towns that adopt quality outdoor lighting ordinances and undertake efforts to educate residents about the importance of dark skies. So that's going to be about a, probably a, a good one to two-year process. It involves a lot of education on what the dark sky communities are, and it, and that has to do with public street lighting and then also street lighting within your own private residence, uh, to help, uh, with the, to keep our skies dark. Um, and then also the follow-up from a meeting several months ago, the water tower lighting, just want to let everybody know that we are going to get up and, and get some of the model numbers off the existing lighting uh, in the tower. We're going to wait till October to do that. It's the same time that we have our tank inspection for the water tank. So if we get that information, we'll start looking at the lighting and something that's dark sky compliant on the water tower, if we're able to, and bring that back before the commission uh, as, as requested. Um, yeah, outside of that, um, as you can see, our department heads, they tackle like issues that are very complicated and, and, and and touchy, I guess, and personal to a lot. And so they, they take a lot of people's opinions and they try to come out with the best of to, to make everybody happy as, as, as we can. Um, but it, it does take quite a bit of time to get something moving through the government process. But, um, I'm glad to see that we're starting to tackle some of these things such as the golf court.
They've done a, you guys have done a great job.
And then the, uh, uh, member. And then the uh, uh, member of the residents that step up, citizens. So really, it just, this takes, it takes community, I think, and uh, just proud of what our guys do and our staff does on a daily basis.
Andy, you want to introduce Reagan? She hasn't.
Yes.
You know, had been officially introduced.
Yes, um, and this is our new uh human resources director. Her name's uh Reagan Reynolds. She comes from Utah. She uh, but she's got, she's got some experience in, in the state and, in North Carolina uh with the League of Cities and uh she's been with us now for a couple of weeks and we're going to make some changes in our human resources department for the better for our employees. And we're glad that that she's here this evening. And if you'd like to uh say anything else, you're more than welcome. So we'd like to welcome you. Yeah, I want to hear that. Uh, actually.
So originally from North Carolina, two, two and a half year pit stop in Utah, so I don't claim it. So I'm a North Carolina born and bred. I'm happy to be here. So I'm looking forward to getting to know every one of y'all and helping the town of Oakland continue to succeed.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Yeah.
You're still in North Carolina, maybe there, case you had.
Hey, a whole lot of.
Anything else?
That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Really well. Okay, Sal.
Uh, just another reminder of, of thanking everybody, the Hispanic event we had at the Oakland Art Museum.
Thanks. Great.
Thank you, Joseph and Hapco and all the staff. It was really good. It was very, uh, I got a lot of reviews from a lot of people I ran into and really proud of that.
I've got to tell you, that young boy was fat.
Yes, he was.
Nice, well-mannered kid.
Yes, he was. Thank you, Joseph. Keep them coming. That's all I got.
You got two weeks, you got.
Rick.
I don't have anything.
So this past weekend, of course, you know, I, I served on the F O C board. And so this past weekend, it was really talking about setting their budget and just talking about um the things that they have been doing over the last few years. And I text Andy, just, this, this, this wanted to share you know, with the town, some of the, the things or some of the programs they offer. So they, you know, they have a pension plan, they have insurance company, they even have a loan. You know, school floor, but they have an insurance company that they do insurance for municipalities. Uh, and a county trust, also they have an investment trust, pension, pension trust and a loan council. So Florida League of Cities really.
They're robust.
Great job. And they're top, you know, league of cities in the country. And just to give you just a little, um, a, a little snapshot, the, the fees that some, the, the cities and the towns pay only comprise of four percent of their revenue. And that's way uh far the lowest in the country. And so um, you know, they make their monies from, you know, the different services that they offer and invest, especially the investment services. And they've been doing a pretty good job. You know, also, like I said, they even do um investment services for counties and special benefits around, around the state. And so I just shared that with Andy. So as we continue to grow and look at other products, you know, even loans, you know, they have a, a, a loan division. So maybe something that we can tap in.
That's why we got you there.
And it was in Fort Myers. Fort Myers is a nice city.
Oh, it's a nice area, yeah. Did you get over to Sanibel or Captiva?
No, but the second B, the second VP, she's the mayor of Sanibel, so they still.
They're still digging out.
Right, yeah. Yeah, so she shared, so she shared a story about the insurance. They had, they have the insurance from the Florida League. And she would, she was telling us that if it wasn't for that, you know, they would, you know, not sure where they would be. So their insurance just, you know, just pop right on in and, you know, they're taking care of all their claims. But there's some cities and towns that's dealing with some of the um, the natural disasters. They still having problems collecting all the dollars, but when it relates to the F O C insurance um council, no problem.
Well, I'm telling you what, the pan, the Panhandle who got hit, what, a year or two earlier is still digging out.
Is that right? The two?
Oh, it's been like three, or fourth. It's been a while. But I know somebody who has a condo up on the Panhandle where it came in. I can't remember the name of the town. And it was four years before his condo was rebuilt.
Yeah, so that's, so they actually compared the stories of the Panhandle when he was talking about the insurance trust.
Yep.
She spoke up and gave her scenario.
That's great. Mikey?
I'm good tonight. I'm good tonight. On you now.
No, I, it's not on me. Um, uh, there, I don't think I have anything to publicly share except that we had, didn't, and we may have talked about this at the last meeting, but we all went to see Sean Snape um, presentation and that was just fabulous. Rick really liked it.
Yeah. Correct.
Yeah, he was, he'd never seen Sean before. So um, that was, I think, well worth our time. So um, so Thursday is farmer's market and let's go have some fun.
Tomorrow's hot dog.
Hot dogs.
There, there, yes, it's, it's hot dog therapy. He's still here. I noticed last week he was.
Hot dog therapy.
Yeah.
Tomorrow, tomorrow.
Okay, because last week he was.
Oh, yeah. I tried to, I tried to heal that. I don't know if it is. I tried to forget it.
Good work.